Good evening, Mayor and Council. News today comes from the Department of State Health Services. Currently, we have active cases in the state, 303,932. New cases just today, 8,140. Forty-six fatalities across the state today. There's conflicting information between DSHS and Public Health Region 7 on the fatalities for Lampasses County. Region 7 still shows us at 39, however, DSHS shows Lampasses County at 50. Yeah, so that's a little bit of a discrepancy there. Active cases for Lampasses County is 381. Moving along to hospitalizations across the state, 13,065. This is actually a decrease from when we met three weeks ago. Trauma Service Area L, we have 138 people with COVID in the general beds. They've broken this down. They've really, they've dialed it in now as far as a lot of demographics on this. So 138 are just in the hospital. Forty-seven are in ICU. Pediatric COVID patients, 12. Confirmed COVID admissions in the last 24 hours of just Trauma Service area, L, 60. So a lot of cases go in the hospital now. New COVID cases reported in the last week for Lampasses County, 22. If 22 sounds great, we were at 90 the week before. 90 the week before. That was the Labor Day weekend. Let's see. Where was I at on that? All right, cases since October 10th. This is where that 90 number really piles in there. 561 cases in just the last 30 days for Lampasses County. So there you go. Vaccinations are starting to look a lot better, at least one shot, and this is by zip code, 5,446. That's up from 5,019. Fully vaccinated, 4,464, and that number's up from 4,105. Looking at the entire county, we have at least one shot, 9,230 people fully vaccinated, 76,000, or excuse me, 7,637. One interesting thing, I have been trying to look at demographics as far as with the Delta variant, what we have going on, who is it impacting, who is it affecting, the different age groups and everything like that. Believe it or not, in the last three weeks, the fatalities, it's still 80% of the fatalities are over the age of 50. 80% of the fatalities are over the age of 50 in the last three weeks. That number is down from the entire COVID at one point, or from, if you look at it still, 90% of the fatalities were over the age of 50. So this is definitely, you know, with the new rise in the Delta variant impacting the younger generation even more, I think that's part of the reason why there's a lot of concern for that. So, does anybody have any other questions for me?
Did you mention the deaths? How many deaths we'd had here in Lampasses County?
Lampasses County, there's some discrepancy. Public Health shows us 39. The Department of State Health Human Services shows us at 50. I don't know where that discrepancy comes from.
What timeframe is that?
This would be total.
Oh, total.
This would be total, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry about the confusion.
Which one would you believe?
I would think right now that Public Health is accurate as far as what we have. They just haven't been notified. I'm not aware of that many numbers as far as what I see during our day-to-day operations. I haven't seen that, like, all of a sudden, wow, we went to 50. So it would lead me to believe, like Dr. Hay said in the past, we have people that are actually, have an address here in town, but they may be in some type of extended care facility that may be in another location. So we're not aware of that, but their actual physical mailing address does show up as far as in Lampasses.
What, do you know what the total complete number of COVID cases that we've had since it began?
For the state?
Just for the Lampasses County?
Yes, 2,600 now, I think, is what they're showing as the total.
Okay.
Yeah. The majority, we had gotten down in June and July to where we were in the single numbers, and with the increase in the Delta variant, this is where we come back up again. So I would say that by the time that it's all shook out and everything like that, by the end of this month, we'll probably be up, you know, 3,000 or 3,200.
Okay.
It's growing, it's going that fast.
So probably fair to say we're 3%, 4% in the, as far as the death rate goes?
Of those that do contact it, yes.
Okay.
A little bit higher than that, right now.
Yeah, right now.
And if it's at 50, it would be significantly higher than that.
Right.
So, but if we're at 3,000 and they assume that our population for Lampasses County is 18,000, keep in mind, we're talking about the entire county, so going through that real quick, you would have a little bit, you know, we're probably right on line with everybody else, but our numbers are higher as far as that fatality in there. We are an older population.
Okay.
Keep in mind, it's the 50 and older that this impacts the most as far as lethality.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
I still don't see vision. Okay, sure. Next up, we're going to talk about the Advisory Board Annual Renewals and Vacancies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation of what I've been presenting over the last few weeks, just kind of keep you abreast of how the renewals have been going and any new applicants or new interests that we've received for our various advisory boards that we have. We currently have 33 board term members that are expiring September 30th. That's when they're going to be eligible to renew. We currently have three vacancies, and six of the 33 have opted to not renew their reappointment. Two of them are on PNZ, two on golf, and then one at the Library Board who will resign in December. We have received 22 renewals and 13 newly interested or current board members that are interested in volunteering on another board. As we spoke before about the six-year term, we do have 66 board members total of those. We have 31 that have exceeded six-year term limits overall, over the history of whatever board they've been on, most recent, just to give you some feedback. You will notice on the two tables I provided, I provided two of them for you. One of them has some highlighted information and then has some bolded information, just to kind of identify those that have opted to renew their current application, their term, and then those that have opted not to renew. And then the bottom part of that table does represent all the members of all of the boards and when they started, and then how long they've been on those boards. And then it kind of gives you a definition at the bottom of what's required for each of those boards. And then I provided another table for you that just displays those of interest at each of the boards. And again, some of these are already on a board, but they have, you know, have interest in being on another board as well.
And what's the timeframe for starting these new memberships?
Well, they end at September 30th, is when they expire. So the first meeting in October is when I normally come to y'all and start reappointing or appoint new members. So it just kind of varies. Keep in mind that we won't always have a meeting for the various boards, so a lot of them are just going to be renewed automatically based on y'all's appointment. And then those that have interest of new will go to those boards for them that would want to appoint them to those individual boards as well. So it might take a little longer, just depending on how it falls.
Right. Anybody have any questions for Becky? Number five, let's go to discussion regarding Highway 281 South Improvement and Widening Project, including access options for the Hostess House.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And first of all, we do want to take the opportunity to provide at least an overview of the project. It's been some time since TechDOT's been out here. They have conducted, I believe, three public meetings on this project, as well has made contact with all of the adjacent property owners. If you can go a little bit to the south, Monica, just in terms of the scope of this project, the way, we'll start at the Burnett County line. There we go. So this project, basically, the scope initiates at the Burnett County line with the widening. You can see that they go to two lanes in both directions, plus a center turn lane. If you see at the County Road 1002, you see they've made that now come straight on, or 90-degree angle into 281. Some configuration around the high school. They also have a new configuration for the subdivision there off of 4016. That's now a 90-degree access. If you go further to the north, that's when the project takes on a little bit wider footprint, not much, mostly to the west side. I don't believe they're taking any right-of-way or very little right-of-way to the east side of that. The Naruna Road is what we've talked about previously. If you want to, do you want to zoom in on that, please, Monica? So you can see the idea there is to take Naruna Road so that for eastbound traffic, there is both a left turn and a right turn lane there. And then as you go a little bit further to the north, you can see really what we'd like to get input on from Council tonight, which is the access into the Hostess House parking lot Hancock Pool area. And then also, we know that that's also a very handy parking area for golfers, particularly if they have their carts stored in the cart sheds there to the west. We want to look at probably three or four different configurations that they've come up with in terms of access into the Hostess House parking area. It does, the reason that they're moving that entrance over is because, as you can see, they've reconfigured the intersection where you would normally have a signalized access in ingress and egress into the parking lot. That now is moving a little bit further to the east and a little bit, just a hair more to the north. The entrance, as they've identified there on this particular example, is about 700 feet from the signalized intersection. We had previously looked, and in fact, you've got even an example in your packet where they previously looked at moving that entrance a little closer to where it was previously, but then we have issues with the ability to be able to turn onto 281 from that access. So the greater distance does give us more flexibility and probably more safety from that signalized access or signalized intersection that they're reconfiguring. Just to kind of give you, and as TechDOT, if you've attended any of the public meetings, as TechDOT said, one of the things that they're trying to do is get that traffic off the narrow bridge, off the two-lane that we have on 281. I think everybody on a Friday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon has seen traffic stack there quite a ways back, not necessarily all the way to the bridge, but we do get tremendous amount of traffic stacking up on 281. My understanding is that will now be what they refer to as a business 281, and they will direct all 281 through traffic on E Omnus up to the 190. And you can see that as you get to 190 and Key, or excuse me, 281, 190 and Key Avenue, keep going to the, to Key, you can see that they're also going to make a number of different modifications to that intersection, primarily striping some signage. They will take, I believe, a little bit of right-of-way off of the Valero corner, but all in all, this also includes sidewalks, so you'll see connecting sidewalks to the Hostess House that were not there before in some access in and around the park area. I don't pretend to be able to explain this as well as the TechDOT reps. As I said, our primary focus tonight is to give you just a quick overview, and then also, let's take a look at that access into the Hostess House, because that's something that TechDOT has specifically asked for input on. And again, the scope of the project is Burnett County line to Key Avenue. This is about a $15 million project that they plan to have constructed sometime in 2023. So they're getting, I'm trying to remember when we even had the first public meetings on this. It's probably been two years ago, but that's, but that's the pace, and it's a fairly typical pace for a project of this magnitude, where they do have to deal with so many property owners and entities, stakeholders. I want to go ahead and, Monica, we can refer back to the packet now.
Finley?
Yes.
Sorry, it's me. I was just curious. So if they're going to come in and take out, like on this white part right here, if they're wanting to come this far, and then they're taking out trees and whatnot, and the little piece of that park, who has to pay for this white?
My understanding is TechDOT is paying for that, that piece of it.
Finley?
Yes, sir.
The entrance there going into the Hostess House, as she said, I went down there and looked at it, spent a bit of time today, looking at it this morning, and there are a ton of trees in there, big, big trees.
Very big old trees, yeah.
And I'm concerned about having to...
I think this one particular one that you're looking at has the least amount of trees to come out. Were there five, Finley?
Yes, in fact, I can go through that as I go through the examples, if that's all right.
You know, it's not staked out, so I'm not sure. But also, at Naruna Road, I assume we're going to have to relocate a pole that's a feeder line that goes out to the school. We should be able to do that without taking them out of service, but if we do, maybe we can do it at night or on the weekend or something.
I believe, we've already had Schneider look at that, and we're looking at a concrete pole to avoid the guying on that particular feed.
Yeah, because if we move it down, we're going to be in the entrance there.
Correct.
Probably of the realty company. And there's also a foam pedestal there, I guess, working with AT&amp;T or whoever.
Correct.
Do we have, do we know what this proposed entrance road will cost?
It is part of TechDOT's portion of the project, as far as I know, but I don't know, I don't know individually what that particular piece is.
Yeah, normally, they call us for 10% or 15%.
Correct, and at the last meeting, we did approve 10% agreement. The sum total of that was about $39,000 to be paid over three fiscal years. So that, that piece of the project, or that portion, has already been provided to Council. I will double-check to make sure that there are no other pieces that would be subject to our participation.
Also, at the Hostess House, is that going to affect the right-of-way in there that the state's?
It will not.
Got, as far as our elevator?
It will not.
It will not.
They will not take any right-of-way to the west side of 281 at that particular position.
Okay.
They will probably take a...
Looks also close amount. It looks like close on the aerial, but I realize that's...
Yeah, if you look at the original, well, I don't have that, but...
That's all right. It's just because of the distance on the top view, I'm sure it's bigger than what it looks.
Yeah, and if you can see on this particular view right here, you can see where 281, they're really not encroaching any further to the west off of 281. That intersection is by and large being moved to the east slightly and to the north slightly. But no, we asked them that specific question, and they will not be encroaching on a right-of-way on the west side of 281.
Thank you.
So like, if you look at that, see that little black arrow by the orange triangle that's coming like from the bridge, like it's turning into where the entrance is right now?
Correct.
Is that entrance going to stay there?
No, it will not.
So then that little arrow with the turn-in would not be there?
That arrow will be there to indicate that folks can merge onto 281 from that, from 281 business.
So like, on this one here, so this line is kind of like a mystery, not really there line, that yellow one? Because the purple one's what's current, right? And then there's this yellow line here, what's that?
The purple one indicates new sidewalks that they'll be constructing.
Oh, sidewalks, okay.
Right.
Excuse me, I'm confused then. The purple that's on our picture on our screen is not necessarily in line with what's drawn in on the map that we've got. Is that correct?
The purple, oh, the...
The purple on the screen that goes...
I'm sorry, I was thinking that was blue. The blue is the sidewalk, the purple would be, that is a previous access that they looked at, so that access has actually been moved to the south.
Okay, so that doesn't exist anymore then?
Correct. And you can see the purple access into the barbecue, Young's Barbecue, that's something that they will put in, but that, the one that shows into the Hostess House, that'll be moved further to the south.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. And the blue is the sidewalk, if that's what you were asking. All right, let's take a look at some of the examples of the access. We'll start with page, page 15. And there's actually another one that is a smaller version of this that indicates just the access, but this gives you, this gives you some perspective on the Hostess House as well. This particular access that would require the removal of five trees, there are four pecan from 16, 17-inch diameter, 23-inch diameter, 28-inch diameter, and a hackberry at 6-inch diameter. And those are indicated by the dashed lines on your, on your exhibit. If we go to the next one, and we can come back to these after I get through them all, if that's Counsel's preference. The next one takes a little bit more security, this route. This was an attempt to try to keep as much of the park area intact by taking the road out a little bit wider, but the result is the elimination, or you'd have to eliminate nine trees. Of those trees, there are eight pecan and one elm. Pecans ranging from 11-inch diameter up to 30-inch diameter. Go to the next example, and this would be page 17, and you're, that is the same as page 15, it's just a little closer look at that, and that, as I said, results, would require the removal of five trees, four pecan, one hackberry. Page 18, again, this one is another example of trying to stay on the outside limits of the property. However, this would result in the removal of 14 trees, including one live oak and one elm, and the remainder would be pecan. And then finally, page 19 kind of gives you all of the various examples. The one in the yellow, I don't believe we had specified, but I believe it takes out about as many trees as the first example. The least, the least amount of trees would be through the one that I showed you that's on page 15, five. We would probably want to delineate that roadway either through some cable fencing or something to make it look more like a park road and give it some barrier between the playground area and the access itself. The road is generally, with the exception of the curve, plus or minus 18 feet as it stands right now. I think we would want to push that a little more if we could, but we have, it does have an expanded radius, particularly for, in light of the fact that folks may be bringing golf carts in on trailers and that sort of thing.
Well, I was thinking in terms of service trucks getting to the Hostess House.
Right.
With the remodel that we're proposing to do.
Correct.
And some other storage and other capabilities, we may have a, you know, a float or a cab service truck, one of the large ones that would bring food in.
And we may have to, we may have to see if we can't push that a little bit from the 18 feet, or under the circumstances, you know, we may just have to take up two lanes of traffic and hold traffic until that particular truck can get through. I think, and again, I certainly don't pretend to speak for TechDOT, but I think I've given you the basic information that we received on the 9th from them, and look forward to your comments and input and direction on this. I think if you wanted the road to go around the outside of that particular piece, we certainly could do that, but the cost would be as many as an additional nine to, six to nine trees above what you would have if you did the example in the white.
Finley, what's the utilization on that Hancock Park? Is it heavily utilized or...?
I cannot quantify it for you. I wish I could in terms of numbers. I think generally, you have to do the windshield example, you know, what do you see when you drive by? And I think generally, I see folks in there, you know, a fair amount. It's usually not crowded by any means, but it is a park that's utilized, maybe not to the extent of other park assets, but folks do use it, yes.
Yes, they do have several different little, small children birthday parties and stuff because of the playground there.
Right.
I haven't personally seen a lot of use at the sand volleyball court.
Right.
I don't know, so, but I haven't seen much.
We just, unfortunately, we're not good at being able to count the folks that use it day in, day out, other than it is utilized by the public. I do see our residents and some regional folks use it as well, because it is handy and it's very visible.
Yes, it is. I'm by there a lot, and I walk there, and there are a lot of people using the picnic tables, and especially earlier with COVID so bad, lots of people were eating in the park as well. So I think it's used nicely.
I think the fewer trees, the better, but I'd certainly defer to Council for your comment and input and direction.
Anybody with comments?
I don't really want to take out any trees, but if we have to, we're going to have to take the least amount, in my opinion.
The least amount and the ones that aren't the prettiest, so a hackberry, I think would...
I want to make sure too that we've, we've got the proper height clearance that we need on that particular road.
You bet.
Kathy? Robert? Good? Thank you, Finley.
Thank you.
I think I see vision here. We'll go back to the presentation by Vision Lampasses for our new mural design. Oh, sorry, we'll wait just a moment then.
I apologize. Libby Bluntzer was on her way here with the diagram, and I'm not sure what's happened to her, but we're stuck in Lampasses rush hour traffic. While they're doing that, I'll tell you about the purpose of the mural. We're going to advertise and be promoting the eclipse that'll happen in Lampasses in 2024, so we've designed this lovely mural. Libby talked to the owner of the gas station that's at Key Avenue and Fourth Street, Lucky Key, I think is what it was called, and the mural will be on that location. We're also designing t-shirts and posters, and it'll be on our website, and we're really trying to promote. We're also ordering eclipse glasses, so we're excited about the eclipse, looking forward to promoting it, and I think that's a perfect location. There's so much traffic there that there'll be a lot of people there viewing it. Okay. It's amazing what you could do with cell phones.
What's the timeframe, Diana? When do you think you would start?
We are going to start as soon as the weather cools down a little bit. You know, who knows when that is? And it seems like it goes from too hot weather to starting to rain a lot. October through December is a really busy time for Vision Lampasses. We do Spread Silly, Carol of Lights, the Indian Artifact Show is this weekend, we'll have Christmas on the Creek, and then January will be a lull, but of course, who wants to paint in January, because it'll be dreadful weather. But we do have quite a few volunteers excited about it. It's a fairly simple pattern, the mural is, and so we are looking forward to a quick and easy mural. While she's loading, I'll describe to you what it's going to be. The cowboy that we call Slim, and I guess everybody does, will be on the mural. He's going to be leaning up against the... He's going to be leaning up against the iconic world's largest spur. And he'll be looking up into the sun with his eclipse glasses on because we want everybody to be safe. And there is going to be a giant sunshine. And the coolest part of it is we're going to have a moon that's approaching the sun that will be movable, that we can move from year to year. So it'll start out fairly far from the sun, then it'll get closer to the sun. And the year of the eclipse, it'll be totally eclipsing it. The owner of the business is also interested in putting lighting up. We're going to put lighting behind the sun if possible. And so it'll glow, you know, around the edges. I can tell her fingers are going fast. She is. Any questions about the mural while they're loading the photo?
How do you move the moon?
We're going to put it on an armature. Clark Corbin is our guru. There it is, yay! Clark Corbin is our guru of all things metal. He's building some metal framework for our wildflower murals. You know, those are mounted on wood, and a couple of storms have blown them off. So we're putting those on metal at quite an expense. But, you know, metal works better than wood. So you can see the moon on there is approaching the sun. We'll scoot it up a couple of times. There'll be armature underneath. We'll unscrew it. We'll move over notch, and then we'll move it over the final notch. And then Slim will be looking at the total eclipse. And that'll be a great place to advertise, a free place to advertise. We usually spend about $2,000 on our mural projects. We raise that money with our fundraisers, Wild West Casino Night, and also the Indian Artifact Show. And of course, we gratefully accept any donations toward the cause. Any other questions about it?
Looks pretty impressive.
You'll notice there's a sunset around the edge because during the total eclipse, there'll be a sunset at 360 degrees. Okay. If Libby shows up here, we'll say, yay, Libby! Thank you very much for your patience.
Thanks, Diana. And next item is any discussion regarding, any item on the regular agenda. Anybody have any questions about the agenda? Shall we take a break? Anyone need a break?
I'm good.
Good? Good? Shall we just continue on? Are you all good with that? Are you good to keep going without a break? Okay. All right, we're going to adjourn the workshop session, and we're going to go into the regular session. Are you going to take a break?
No, I'm waiting for the chief to come up to give the invocation.
I'm just going to get him. Okay, we're ready for the invocation, chief?
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I pray that during these trying times, you bless each and every person and surround them with love and protection. Lord, remind us that even in our darkest times, in our most disappointed and desperate times, you are with us. Lord, you choose our path. We may wish for our lives to be better, to be easier, or to be on a different path. But you know the way that, you know the plans that you have for us, Lord. You know the direction of the path that you wish for us. Lord, tonight, we ask that as we have our meeting, that you watch over us and make sure that all our plans are in accordance to you and to the path that you wish for us to follow. Lord, as always, we ask that you provide us with strength and wisdom during our meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next item would be presentations and proclamations. We do have a proclamation for the library card signup month. Whereas a library card is the most essential school supply of all. Whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children. Whereas libraries offer a variety of programs to stimulate an interest in reading and learning. Whereas library resources serve students of all ages, from early literacy to STEAM programs to research databases. Whereas signing up for a library card is the first step on the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning. Whereas a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond. Whereas librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another. Whereas a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests. Whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding services to meet the evolving needs of their community. Therefore, be it resolved that I, TJ Monroe, Mayor of Landpasses, proclaim September Library Card Signup Month in Landpasses, Texas, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today. In witness whereof, I have herewith set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Landpasses, Texas to be affixed this thirteenth day of September, 2021. Next item is public hearing for citizen comments. 1.1, citizen comments. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. I do believe we have Mr. Mike Watson, who's going to talk to us about the dark sky.
I'll be brief. I just want to introduce this topic to you. Thank you, Mayor Monroe and Councilman. You may be familiar with this already. This is a topic about our community and preserving what we have, enhancing the way of life here in Landpasses. And that is the preserving our night skies, the dark sky. And full disclosure, I don't vote for anybody in the room. I live in the county, so I live west of town. And so I should say, so far, I don't vote for anyone in the room. But this is something that affects our entire community. And we're really, really privileged here to have the night sky that we have, also the eclipse. So it's great to be following Ms. Hodges on this. Now I'm going to talk about the nighttime. You know, I can walk out my door and I can look up in the sky. My horizon is almost completely black, and I can see the Milky Way. And that's a real privilege. A third of the people in the world cannot see the Milky Way from where they live. And in America, eighty percent of the citizens cannot see the Milky Way from where they live. But we can here in Landpasses, in our community. And I would like for the council to consider helping to preserve and enhance that. It's really easy. This is one of the easiest things that you can work on. All it means is being smarter about lighting, about nighttime lighting. And the first step of it is awareness, is just making people aware. I think if you make people aware of the issue, that's going to go a long way towards the decisions that they make about the lighting that they put in, either as a business or as a private citizen. And the county has taken a first step in this. You may know, and it's in the packet that I've given you, the county passed a resolution last month supporting night sky preservation in the county and encouraging citizens to make good decisions about that. As you may know, the county's power in this is really limited. There's not a lot that the county can do other than encourage the behavior. The city can certainly encourage behavior, but also through the zoning regulations, the city and the city limits and in the ETJ can also take further steps. And many cities surrounding us have already done this. But the first step, as I said, is just communication and making people aware of the issue and what they can do about it. So what I would ask is, first, the council consider this and see if it's something that you're interested in and want to pursue. If you do, maybe schedule more discussion at a future meeting. The folder that I've given you is from the Hill Country Alliance, which is county south of us. And they have a full-time staff member who's dedicated to this. And she would be happy to come and speak to you in more detail about it, either maybe in a working session or as you see appropriate. The second step you might consider is to pass a resolution encouraging night sky friendly lighting, similar to what the county has done. And there, on the Hill Country Alliance website, has got a lot of information, including examples of resolutions and zoning regulations that have been passed by the surrounding counties. There's also an international night sky organization, and they have a lot of resources also for steps that you can take. And then, you know, perhaps if that's something that the council wants to pursue, another step would be to look at other measures besides just saying, hey, we support this and encourage the use, looking at zoning and the other possibilities. And also looking at what can the city itself do? I mean, one thing is if you support it, that's great. You can support it with your words. But the city can also say, okay, for example, every light that we install going forward will be night sky friendly. And so you can lead by example in this. So that's all I had. I'm happy if you have any questions about that to answer them and look forward to your next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 1.2, citizen comments. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time. There are no signatures. We'll continue on to the minutes. 2.1, discussion and possible action concerning the approval of the minutes of the special meeting held on August 16th, 2021.
I didn't see any corrections. Recommend approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2.2. Discussion and possible action concerning the approval of minutes of the regular session held on August 23rd, 2021.
Didn't see any corrections again. Recommend approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2.3, discussion and possible action concerning the approval of minutes of the special meeting held on September 7th, 2021.
Again, I didn't see any corrections. Recommend approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda consists of 3.1, discussion and possible action regarding the purchases and charges in excess of $4,000 from August 1 through August 31, 2021. 3.2, discussion and possible action regarding the July 2021 investment report. Does anyone wish to pull either of those?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no board reports. Next item is routine matters. 5.1, city manager's operational report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few brief comments. These are included within your packet. On the assistant city manager, we have notified the previous candidates of our intention to reopen that position. We have ready to go advertisement for the TML website that we plan to post on or before September 15th. Ajinomoto Foods, North America, we did have a productive meeting on August 26th related to the pre-treatment upgrades. The topics included the location and effectiveness of the onsite interceptors that they plan to install, operational changes that they've been making to decrease volume and loading, and ongoing testing and data collection. You know, based on the investigation at this point, I think our consulting engineers feel like the technology does appear to accomplish all of the loading goals with the added benefit of being at a reduced cost. We will be doing some things here in the near future related to analyzing the additional data, likely conducting a pilot study on the technology and preparing new site layout. So that project and that issue continues to move forward. East Third Street, that project is currently out to bid at this time with the opening of bids scheduled for October 12th. The scope of that project includes about 1,100 linear feet of paving, curb and gutter upgrade, as well as some improvement to the intersections for drainage and accessibility. And I think you'll all be happy to know that the two little culverts underneath Western are going to be eliminated. And all four of those corners will be dressed up and be much more efficient, more user-friendly for our traveling public. Trash, we wanted to keep you up to date on that. You may have experienced or heard of some disruptions in trash service over the last couple of months. We have contacted and talked, had ongoing conversation with our trash hauler. They typically had issues with trucks getting packed out on busy days or maintenance issues with their trucks not being able to handle everything. They have committed to an additional residential truck that I believe is already in town now for the four residential pickup days. They previously just had that truck here on Monday, a third truck on Monday for weekend pickups. But so that will help. And then they've also committed to an additional commercial truck. However, the delivery time for that commercial truck is going to be between 30 and 60 days. We continue to monitor that situation. We have told them that we remain ready to, if need be, send them formal notification. However, we certainly hope that they follow up and their actions will back up what they've told us. Councilman Clark?
Yes, Finley, I just would like, if it's possible for us to be sure and have posted on our website. There were a lot of confusion on Labor Day.
Yes.
In regards to pickup and not pickup. And I had looked earlier on the website and didn't see it because we were trying to catch it. I did find it in the radiogram, but we had conflicting reports.
I think some of the confusion, some of the confusion was also that they considered the waste management was city-related. And the city posted a vacation, I mean, a holiday. And the people that were talking to me were saying they thought the trash pickup was the city's responsibility. So I think some of it.
It was all kinds of mixed from what I got.
And we received some phone calls like that on Tuesday about their, you know.
I just appreciate everything we can do to get it advertised.
Absolutely. Understood. And that's our goal as well. Fort Hood, you've got a couple of items in your packet related from the Texas, Heart of Texas Defense Alliance. One of them is related to the base renaming commission, which is now accepting public comment, particularly for installations that are up for renaming, including Fort Hood. The information, should you choose to make comment, is included in your packet and in that press release, as well as the fast facts from Fort Hood, which is basically a demographic snapshot in terms of how many soldiers are there, how many are deployed, what are their family sizes, what are the civilian impacts? You've got over 100,000 individuals at impact, not only Colleen and Copper's Cove, but all of central Texas in terms of their presence in the commerce and the business that they're doing. So sales tax, pleased to report. Compared to September of 2020, we're up about 16% on those receipts. Year-to-date comparisons, we're up about 21.76%. We keep waiting for it to plateau, and I, maybe it may not ever plateau. I don't. Yvonne just shakes her head every month when she comes into my office. Makes me guess. LEDC, Landpasses Economic Development Corporation, was scheduled to close on infrastructure note today. And I believe it all went well as far as that goes. That note will be combined with other restricted funds of the corporation for construction of water, wastewater roads, and drainage improvements in the business park. The timing of that construction will be dependent on the design of a bid alternate. The corporation decided to go ahead and design about a thousand-foot extension to the east that would intersect with 183 to add on to the program as an alternate. So we feel like that is going to be done in fairly quick order and we'll be able to put that project out to bid fairly quickly. As a reminder, those improvements should be able to support shovel-ready sites over approximately 35 acres. approximately 35 acres. Building codes, as previously reported, we are starting to investigate and receive input on upgrades to the city's building codes. This is done for a couple of reasons. One is to maintain ISO rating, as well as to keep up with the requirements that may come down from the state or other jurisdictions. We have scheduled a meeting that council certainly is welcome to attend. Please let Becky know if you plan to, just so we can post for a possible quorum for September 16th, 5:30 PM at the hostess house. The targets for that particular meeting are going to be those involved with the trades, developers, real estate agents, and brokers. And again, we're we're seeking their input on on this process. Fund 40 projects, I think it's safe to say that we'd like to bring hopefully all three projects to you for some sort of go-no-go on the September 27th meeting. Anthony, Antonio Naylor should be prepared for a proposal for the design, the complete design of the hostess house on September 27th. He also understands the timing of the project related to initiating the structural work first, doing the complete design, and then probably in quarter one of 2023, construction on the renovation. We will also be getting with the contractor and stakeholders on the pavilion. I think we're very close to having a final design for that project, and then also a design proposal from SPA Skate Parks. We'd plan to bring those to you on the 27th.
I had a question on the pavilion. Have you had a chance to meet with Lafta about that pavilion or anyone from Lafta?
I have not recently. We, their last meeting, I don't know if Chris was able to attend, but I was not able to attend, but we we will pull them together. I know they're very busy with the boots and blazers program, but we do want to get with them before, you know.
Before the 27th?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Eclipse, again, there was a community meeting August 25th, was attended by county officials, state TIDAM reps, first responders, community members, cities, city officials. It was a very kind of general discussion regarding the potential impact of that event to central Texas and particularly on the path of the totality which Lampassus is in the bull's eye of. I think the, again, as we've said previously, I think the city's role and focus is going to be primarily related to public safety, traffic, and utilities. But we do look forward to working with a number of different partners and stakeholders on a successful and safe event. Airport, we are considering a joint advisory board meeting at the next workshop. We do want also, if we can't get our planner there at that meeting, have meet with the Texas Aviation Planner before that. We were kind of spoiled. We had a central Texas, Texas Planner representative for a number of years, just really knew all of these little airports very well. Michelle Hannah did a great job, and we kind of got spoiled by her. She ended up retiring, and so Ben Breck, we're going to have to get get him and get him to know our airport a little bit better and our and the folks that are involved. Subject to your input and direction, we'd like to go ahead and schedule that for the workshop on the 27th. And then the only other thing that I have on my list just is that if council has no objection, we can put a night sky discussion on either workshop or for a resolution, but if you have any input on that, just let me know, but we'll we'll be happy to put that on the next agenda on the 27th.
Okay. Does anyone have objection to the airport meeting on the 27th? Is that good for everyone?
I don't. I would like to workshop the night sky.
Very good. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Finley. Mayor comments? I do have a few words. Chuck and I both were fortunate enough to be able to work with the city of Lomita, the city of Kemptner, sheriff's department, and the county to help with the 9/11 memorial ceremony that was Saturday. I think it went very well.
It sure did.
Thank you. Thank you, and Deb. I do want to thank everyone, and it turns out that it seems like I need to thank everyone, but particularly Chief Bailey and her police department, Chief Smith and his fire department, Carlos and the street department, and Chris and the parks department. As always, as always, they're very, very attentive to our needs, and they they show up with whatever we ask of them. It was hosted by the county, but I believe that Lampassus provided most all of the, most all of the resources. So thank you all for that. We have no unfinished business. Seven point zero, new business. Seven point one, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the mural design on the building at Key and East Fourth.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I assumed you'd already discussed it. Do you have some questions?
I did have one question.
Okay.
Of the group in regards to.
Diana.
I'm sorry?
No.
I did have one question in regards to whether or not there would be some indication of our ZIP code or anything on that. It's not shown on the mural, but should it, should it be?
It's Lampassus Texas, but certainly you could zip code on your house.
Do you, do you think that would be helpful in any way? I don't want to add anything to it if it's.
You know, we say give it anything, so we can add it, if it won't be a problem to add it, it's your employer and sign. Usually it's given speaking there or depending where, so there may be our bill up here responding, so whatever we're moving to add, we certainly have this. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven point two, discuss and consider the selection of the winner of the website photo entry contest.
Mayor and city council, there were four photo entries for the month of August.
Does anyone have a favorite?
I like two and three, either one of those.
I like number three.
Is that a motion for three? Are you good with three? Three?
Second.
All those in favor for number three?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven point three, discussion and possible action concerning the first reading of an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the city of Lampassus for fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2021, ending on September 30, 2022, appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirements on all indebtedness, providing a severability clause, providing a repealer clause for the repeal of all ordinances and appreciation, I'm sorry, appropriations in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, mayor and council. The ordinance before you does adopt the budget for the next fiscal year, 2122.
I believe we need a record vote for this.
Yes, ma'am.
We need a motion.
Move to approve.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodart?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Williamson?
Aye.
Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaney?
Aye.
Seven point four, discussion and possible action concerning the first reading of an ordinance setting the tax rate and levying a tax upon all property subject to taxation within the city of Lampassus, Texas, for the 2021 tax year for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Lampassus for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, supporting said levy among the various funds and items for which revenues must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt for the city of Lampassus, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is the ordinance to adopt the tax rate for fiscal year 2122.
Make a motion that the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.3370, which is effectively a 4.76% increase in the tax rate.
We will need a record vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protim Williamson?
Aye.
Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaney?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodart?
Aye.
Are we good on that? Seven point five, discussion and possible action regarding ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget.
Mayor, we do, we are required to ratify the vote on the tax increase. It is also a roll call vote.
Recommend approval.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaney?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodart?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Williamson?
Aye.
Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, Yvonne. Seven point six, discussion and possible action to consider the approval of the public safety quarantine leave policy as mandated by House Bill Number 273.
Good evening, mayor and council. The city of Lampassus, City Council of Lampassus provides well for its employees of Lampassus, provides us with support, with our health, with our well-being, and and safety options. House Bill 273 is not based on the care that the city of Lampassus provides to its employees and first responders, because we're provided for very well, and we appreciate it. Thank you. House Bill 273 mandates that we develop and implement a paid quarantine leave program for our employees that are firefighters, firefighter communications, peace officers, detention officers, and emergency medical technicians, that's our EMTs and paramedics for the city of Lampassus, that are placed on quarantine or isolation due to a known exposure to a communicable disease while they are on duty. The quarantine isolation shall be paid leave and shall not be provided with, with all, and shall be provided, I'm sorry, with all employment benefits and compensation, including leave accrual, pension benefits, health plan benefits, and if applicable, reimbursement for reimbursed reasonable costs related to the quarantine, including lodging, medical, and transportation cost. When COVID started, we had already made all these arrangements and plans should we have to isolate an employee or quarantine them for work-related exposure. The city may not reduce the eligible employee sick leave balance, vacation leave balance, holiday leave balance, or other paid leave balance in connection with quarantine leave required by this policy in House Bill 273 that went into effect June 15th of 2021. Mayor and council, I'm asking for your approval of the policy as submitted for inclusion with the city personnel policies and procedures.
I move to approve this.
Second.
We, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments?
I just.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
I'm sure.
Do you mind standing and identifying yourself, please?
I am sure you can take this. But I'm taking F M L A already. Why can't they use their time off, their leave, their vacation time? I have to, I work.
Mayor and council, this is mandated by the House of Representatives.
Go ahead. I don't believe we've had a major problem with it. Most everybody has acquired quite a bit of sick leave and and so on and so forth.
No, sir, we've not.
You're talking about paying extra, right? You're not talking about like my job, my F M L A, my vacation time, my P C A. You're talking about paying more.
That is correct. Specifically.
There's plenty of money budgeted for this, and as far as, from what I understand. And I think that if we are asking our firefighters and our police officers to put themselves in harm's way to take care of citizens that have COVID, and if they contract COVID or something like that on the job, they deserve for the city to take care of them while they are restricted in quarantine without having to, for them to do family medical leave. Because that is not family medical leave. That is medical leave that's happening to them because they contracted COVID while doing their job. And I think other businesses should do the same thing.
And I agree 100%, but the problem lies with us and us having to take care of the needs and our pocketbooks. I work as a medical care professional. I don't get that. If I get sick with COVID, I have to take my F M L A, my vacation time, or my paid leave, okay? So I want to see a report of what we're going to be giving these people in case that does happen, because let me tell you, probably everybody's already had COVID.
Well, I'll tell you right now, personally, besides doing the city council, I'm a teacher, and I put myself at risk every day, and you're right. The school district is, if I were to get COVID directly from a student, the school district says, take your own time, and I don't think it's right. And so, and in this case, with the police and the fire, I personally think that the city needs to stand up and take care of their people.
This bill is mandated so that the city is responsible for doing these things, and it's set out very explicitly as to what we need to do to comply with the House Bill 273.
Okay. Can I, may I see the bill and what we'll be paying for this?
I'm sure it's available on the state site. Becky, could you get her that site possibly? Yes.
Thank you, mayor.
Have someone give you that information.
It's also on the city website as well in this packet. Yes, it is.
Mayor, we have a, we have a second, motion and a second. I'm ready to vote.
I want to go on record and say I'm going to support the police, the firemen, all of our first responders that put their life on the line every single day, 24 hours a day to us.
And I do believe teachers ought to have the same.
I'm a doctor, and my son is a police officer, and I do appreciate that, but I want to see what we're going to be paying, and I'd like to see the bill, the mandated bill.
Right. Someone will get that information to you, ma'am. Thank you all for your comments. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven point seven, discussion and possible action to consider the approval of the mental health, mental health leave for peace officer policy as legislated by the state of Texas.
Mayor and council, Senate Bill, I apologize, Senate Bill 1359 also mandates a policy for mental health leave for peace officers. Again, the city of Lampassus has always provided for its employees and supports our health and our mental health concerns. Mental health leave for peace officers is mandated by Senate Bill 1359, and it requires law enforcement agencies to develop and adapt a policy allowing use of paid mental health leave by peace officers employed by the agency who experience a traumatic event in the scope of our employment. The policy I submitted is based from Senate Bill 1359 mandates. It's also from best practices as provided by the Texas Association of Chiefs of Police, and it also follows our city, city of Lampassus policy. The policy defines critical incidents, traumatic events. It defines when the leave can be taken. It provides for privacy, confidentiality, a way to request for an officer, for their supervisor or coworker to suggest that mental health assistance may be needed, and a standardization following the current city policy of three days off, that we provide a medical note or a mental health professional note stating that we have this time off for this reason, or we may need additional time off. Also, there's a chain of command for approval and for denial, so that all are treated equally and fairly with this. and fairly with this. During this, there can be no reduction in salary or other benefits such as sick leave, vacation leave, holiday leave, or other paid leave in connection with this leave. And there's a return to duty standard, a fitness for, uh, health standard that goes, goes with this. It also provides for mental health resources that are available to law enforcement officers. Mayor, Council, I'm asking for your approval of a policy as submitted for inclusion with the city personnel policies and procedures for mental health leave for peace officers.
I move to approve.
Second.
So we have a moment to ask any questions if need be. I was very proud to learn that we treat all our employees to this benefit as well, that, uh, not just peace officers, but all of our city employees are taken care of with this.
Yes, there, we have a very good wellness plan with the city that's provided to all employees.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments?
Is that wellness plan, is that provided through the, the city's insurance? Is that what that is?
Part of it, yes, sir. Part of it. There's also some additional benefits that an employee can purchase with that as well. Ma'am, this is in relation to a traumatic event that they've had to witness or handle. For a fitness of duty.
May I ask that she approached the microphone? We can all hear.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear her.
Becky, I think she's asking if they are fit to serve, but we'll get it clarified.
My concern is, is that it would be nice for them to have mental health testing before they're allowed to go back to the job.
I believe they do have to have permission to return to work from their, their medical professional.
Prior to going to work, a police officer has to have a psychological evaluation approved by a psychologic, a psychologist, a mental health professional with that. Also, if we experience a traumatic, traumatic event, we can request to have additional counseling. We have debriefing. We can also have additional counseling that's provided to us. Traumatic events such as we're involved in a shooting, death of a child, a tornado that comes through, such as what happened in Gerald, something that goes beyond our scope, beyond anyone's scope of, of what we deal with on a daily basis.
I think we understand what that means. What I'm questioning is, can I see the information that they do have to take a psych evaluation? Because I know that that's not true.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I'd like to see the information that they need to take a psych evaluation before they're released back to duty after they've been through a traumatic event.
Ma'am, you can make an open records request for that at any time. It's also, oh, this is also in your packet, ma'am. If you look on page 109, two page.
That mandated through the city?
112.
Or through the state?
Ma'am, that's mandated through Senate Bill.
Through the Senate Bill?
Yes, ma'am, through Senate Bill.
And so why are you requesting permission for that to be done if it's probably already passed?
We're requesting permission to add it to our policies, personnel policies of the City of Lampasas.
What's the addition?
Ma'am, to include the mental health mandate into the city policies.
So the mental health isn't there. Yeah, I would really like to see if a police officer has been through a traumatic event, that they do get the help. We saw what happened with George Foreman situation and other situations. And when you do come out of a traumatic event, I served in the military, it is a traumatic event that needs to be assessed. And every, and each police officer should have to be evaluated before they're released back onto the job.
Yes, ma'am.
I do agree with supporting them, giving them the money, giving them the leave, but they need to be evaluated psychologically before they're released back to duty.
Does she have a packet, Becky?
Ma'am, if you look at page 102, it says it right there. If you look at page 102.
She's amending it. She's asking for extra, so I wanted to make sure.
Right. So when you get home, if you don't have everything you need tomorrow, call back to the city. You will need to ask for some, uh, personal records, but you can get everything you need from the city when you come in.
You can find Senate Bill 1359 online too, ma'am, if you have computer and online.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You can find Senate Bill 1359 online if you have capabilities to search online.
Thank you.
It will all be there. Thank you so much.
Also, the return to duty is on page 102.
We have a motion and a second. Can I get everyone in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. 7.8. Discussion and possible action regarding Chapter 78, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 78 through 219, no parking zones to include in Section 78 to 19, no parking on both sides of South Highway 183, from south of US East 190, AKA, AKA Central Texas Expressway and EE Omnis Drive to the southernmost corporate city limits.
Ma'am, I'm, uh, Council, I'm requesting a motion to include both sides of South Highway 183, from south of East 190, also known as Central Texas Expressway and Omnis Drive to the southernmost corporate city limits as a no parking zone to the City of Lampasas ordinance as Chapter 78 Traffic and Vehicle, Section 78.219A as no parking zones. These are the right-of-way areas to the sides of the roadway, and therefore, if you have an emergency situation where you need to stop for a moment and take care of that situation, not to park, certainly not to park and sleep there for the night. South Key Avenue, South US 183 is often very heavy traffic. The intersection from East 190 and Omnis Drive to just beyond the 1900 block of South 183 is hazardous for people to park on that side of the roadway, either side actually, and to try to walk across that roadway. We've also had situations where vehicles, large vehicles will park in those areas where residents just try to exit from their private drives, such as where Ms. Pinkney lives, and I believe Ms. Pinkney is here tonight. There's apartments in the 1900 block also, or duplexes in that area where people try to pull out. And it's difficult for them to see if we have large vehicles that are parked in that area. Also, when people park in that area, they leave quite a bit of trash. Not everyone, but quite a few leave trash in that area. We've enforced this area. It's difficult to do without signage, and that's the purpose of this ordinance, is so that we can put signage up in the area. Street supervisor Carlos Garcia, and I've checked this area from 190 to Omnis, all the way out to the southernmost point. And we believe that it would take about four to six signs so that people would know not to park in this area. Also with that, when they park in that area, sometimes they get out and they're loud in that area. Also, the lights shine into a residence that's in that area late at night. Once this ordinance is passed, then we'll be allowed to put signage up in that area and be able to enforce the no parking. Oftentimes, it's simply just going up, telling people that, you know, this isn't a safe place for them to park, and they'll move on. But I do believe that with signage, it would be more effective. Do you have a moment for Ms. Pinkney to talk to you?
Sure.
Ms. Pinkney, would you like to come up and speak further? Anyone else?
I would just like to speak in favor of this. I, we have lived on this property for 40 years. It's been an ongoing problem. It is worse now. But I have picked up trash till I'm blue in the face. And, you know, I don't, well, I wouldn't mind people pulling off if they just wouldn't dump out everything they have in their vehicle for somebody else to pick up. And like Sammy said, we own the little house that's right on the highway. When those trucks pull up there, they're loud, the lights, and it's very disconcerting to someone that's there by themselves. And I just would like to encourage this. I, I cannot monitor it myself because I can't see them from my house, because I live off the road. But I see the results of it, and I see lots of, of the vehicles when I'm coming and going, you know, into my property. So I would really appreciate if we could try the signs and just see if that would eliminate some of that. I don't expect the officers to spend their time up there asking people to move on because they've got certainly more important things to do. So perhaps, you know, no parking signs would do the trick. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Recommend approval. Second.
I have one question.
At this point, we have questions. Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to ask, are there any residential houses that are affected directly that park out in front that's next to the?
No, sir, there's not in this, in this area. There is not.
Okay.
Excuse me? On the 1900 block on the west side of the roadway?
I can't.
I still can't.
Ma'am, this isn't pertaining to that area of roadway. This pertains to South 183, not West Avenue C. Ma'am, that's a different issue, and we can address that at my office. You're welcome to come by and visit with me in regards to that. And I believe I sent you a letter.
Mayor, can we move on?
Yes, ma'am.
Call for the question.
Okay.
You can get with the chief later and, and work out an issue with that. Right now, we're voting on a different item, so. Right. Thank you. Thank you. We do have a motion and we have a second. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
7.9. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval of a cart trail paving at Hancock Park Golf Course in the amount not to exceed $17,546. Van, how are you?
I'm doing fine. How are y'all?
Good.
Uh, Mayor, Council, this is a program that we've been doing for years. I didn't do it last year, kind of due to COVID. We were shut down for a month and a half, or a month, or whatever it was. But I'm wanting to do it again this year. I have three bids for this that I got. Well, first of all, let me start by saying I have $10,000 that I budget every year in my capital improvements program. And then the Hancock Park Golf Association has agreed to give $2,000 towards a project, which leaves a balance of $5,546, which would come out of the golf course receipts for this year. The bid for the project is $17,546. And basically, what we're going to be paving is going to be the north side of, of Sulphur Creek, holes number 12 and 13. I can't remember how many feet it was exactly. It seemed like it was 1,700, 1,800 feet, something like that. But it's hole number 12 and hole number 13. But I've got three bids, as you can see in your packet. The bid that, the low bid was All-Star paving out of Liberty Hill for the amount of $17,546. And the next bid was eighty, $8,400 more. So I'm going to recommend going with All-Star paving out of Liberty Hill for the amount of $17,546.
Have a motion?
Recommend approval. Second.
Does anyone have any questions for Van regarding this? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Van.
Thank y'all.
7.10. Discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of an ordinance amending the electric rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This was discussed during budget workshops that we would increase the electric rates. It will be in the first billing in November 2021.
A motion?
And that's?
So moved. A second?
Second.
Okay, we can now have some conversation. Questions or concerns?
I just had a question. The, the, the amount is .0020, and that's like one penny?
One fifth. One fifth of a penny.
One penny.
One tenth of a penny.
One fifth.
One fifth, okay.
And we had discussed the average bill would, I know that's not in here, but by chance, do you reckon, do you remember the average bill going up a few dollars?
Three to four dollars, I believe is what the average was, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
She's going to have to get a mic.
Yeah, you're going to have to mic her.
We can't hear what she's saying, ma'am. Just one moment.
Those bills are going up 50 to $100 a month, and not three to four dollars. That's incorrect.
They're going up with your usage. The actual kilowatt per, per kilowatt hour is going up a fifth of a penny as of November 1.
Right. It'll be the first billing after November 1.
Right.
So they haven't, the, the increase has not gone to effect yet.
Right.
Right. So listen, do you know what we pay per kilowatt?
I'm sure Yvonne can tell us that.
About 11 cents right now.
No, ma'am. 13. We pay 13 cents a kilowatt, and that is high dollar. You can go vacation in Puerto Rances with your RV, and that's what they charge you for electricity. I do not agree with the raise of the electricity rates.
So, so noted. We have a motion?
You know, one of the things, I think the city took a $1.5 million hit this last year during the freeze in, in February and didn't raise it a bit.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct. We did not pass any of that on to the.
And they didn't pass that along to the citizens?
No, sir, we did not.
And in order for us to be prudent in what we're doing, this is what needs to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
I'm not getting paid one dime, ma'am.
That's not, that's not quite true, Herb. You do get a silver dollar.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you do get paid. We don't, we do not receive a salary. So if you would like to discuss some of these things with us, we're happy to meet with you at some other date rather than confuse the issue here. Yes, thank you so much.
Yvonne, we do, it's 11 point something kilowatts hour. It's not 13 cents. Is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Bring that bill in, and someone can go over with you in the utility department, if you would. Sure. Sure. Sounds good. Thank you very much. We do have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask again for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is going to, we're going to adjourn into the executive session. We're going to meet with deliberation concerning the potential purchase, exchange, lease, acquisitions, sale, and/or value of real property for the first item. The second item is economic development. Number one, to receive and evaluate financial information received from a business prospect, to discuss same, and/or to deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the city has received from a business prospect that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations, and/or two, to deliberate an offer of any financial or other incentives to any business prospect described above. I need a motion to adjourn into the executive session.
Second.
We will return.